The pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Heavenly Father, as always, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time together as a county. We thank you for all the ways that you bless us, your love, your grace, your provision, your mercy, just what you do for us, Father. We thank you for your protection. We thank you for your security. We just, we thank you for your unending love. Jesus is most precious and only name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, go ahead and get started tonight. The council has looked over the agenda. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none. The chair moves that the agenda be accepted as unanimous consent. Next on the agenda is the dispersment of July 8th. We've had a chance to take a look at that. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to that?
Nope.
Counsel? Okay. Hearing none. The chair moves that the dispersment be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, so we got an introduction tonight. If the mayor and Andy want to come on up? I want to welcome you guys.
Thank you so much for allowing us to be on your agenda this evening. I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce Andy Kithrow from Salisbury as our new town manager. He was sworn in last evening by council president Abatello. So I know we work closely, the town of Easton and the county together. We look forward to keeping those relationships strong, and I think it's an opportunity for Andy to tell himself, tell you a little bit about himself.
Absolutely.
Floor is yours, Andy.
Thank you. Thank you for hosting me. And let me spend a couple minutes chatting with you all. As she mentioned, I am from the city of Salisbury. I spent the last 20 years working for Wycomica County in the recreation and parks. Or with, the last eight years was with the city of Salisbury. Great relationships with the county, having come from that field, and then just working with the county executive and county administration, getting to work with council president Cannon and his team. So very familiar with the relationships that need to happen between the municipality and the county, and the overlap of opportunities. So looking forward to, when appropriate, working with Talbot and the county administration, and then before the council when we need to be collaborative. So glad to be here. Can be available for any questions. Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, one word, welcome.
Well, I, I, we try to work hard at those county municipal relationships. We meet with the towns four times a year, but we, we actually try to keep in touch with Easton even, even more than that. Frequent meetings with the mayor and so forth, so I look forward to working with you in that capacity. I, I come to this from municipal government before I came to county government. In fact, I was first elected to town of Easton at the same time that now Mayor Cook was first elected to the town council. So still live in town and, and really, really look to, to the town of, town of Easton for, for its important role in the county. Thank you.
Welcome.
Yeah, I echo what my fellow council member said, and welcome.
Yep, yep. Welcome, Andy. Yep, you've got a great crew. You've got a great mayor, and I'm looking forward to working with you, and I appreciate you coming in tonight and telling us who you are and getting started.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
See you soon. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, we got a proclamation of National Parks and Rec Month. Somebody, yes, yeah.
It would be Emily.
Yeah. How you doing, Emily? Good.
Hey.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Good. It's your month. It's your month.
Yes, it is our month. It's hot outside, too. So I'm Emily. I'm the director of Parks and Recreation, and this month is the National Parks and Recreation Month, and I have brought a decent crowd with me today. All of these guys behind me, not all of them, but a lot of these guys behind me are Parks and Rec staff, and our department would not be possible without them. So I had to bring them along for this. We have part-time staff here. We've got full-time staff here, ice rink staff, park staff, you know, so every, every one of these people makes it possible to do what we do.
That's great. That's good. That's good. Counsel?
Well, thanks to your staff, because what you do touches people in a way that makes them feel so proud of what our county does, and connected to what we, and active, all important things. And so, thanks to your team for what you do.
And thank you guys always for your, for your support over the rest.
Thank you for making us a vibrant and active county. Appreciate all you offer.
I get the added blessing of seeing some of the, some of the sausage making from our, from our board meetings, right? So it's, it's amazing what, what you guys do for our community and just, I mean, to see it all come together. I mean, think about all the things we've accomplished over these last few years here in Talbot County. And I mean, I don't, I, it, you can't go very far without seeing something we've done here recently in the county that's just making a huge impact. So thank you, Emily, and all the staff that's here, and board members and everything. So thank you guys for all, all you do.
Thank you for being here, and I'm glad that we're doing this proclamation this month. And thank you to all the staff for the hard work that you do out there.
That's the same thing I want to say with my colleagues. Thanks, thanks a lot, ladies and gentlemen, for all the staff and all that you do. I mean, you, you cover a lot of, from Tillman to Trap, Cordova. So you do, you do a big job, you know. And Emily, you've done a great job in the last, you know, couple years, bringing things to another level, and you're doing a really good job, and we really appreciate that. So, so you guys want to come on up?
No.
Oh, yep, we want to do that first. Yep. Yep. Sorry about that.
Standby. You're still coming.
Standby, standby.
Proclamation, Parks and Recreation Month, July 2025. Whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving physical and mental health, and is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks, playgrounds, ballfields, nature trails, open spaces, and recreational facilities are an integral part of those recreational activities and leisure experiences by providing all age groups with a welcome respite from society's fast-paced, high-tech lifestyle, in addition to making communities more attractive and desirable places to visit, live, work, and play. And whereas the community-based parks and recreational agencies, which organize, manage, and host recreational and leisure activities and programs within their communities, influence the lives of individuals, families, and groups in those communities, and positively impact the social, economic, health, and environmental quality of the surrounding community. Now therefore, we, the county council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month in Talbot County, and encourage all citizens to celebrate by participating in the variety of recreational and leisure activities offered by Talbot County Department of Recreation. Given under our hands in the great seal of Talbot County this 8th day of July in the year of our Lord 2025.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay, now we can come on up.
All right, you guys ready? All right, one, two, three.
Okay, next on the agenda, the public hearing isn't quite ready yet at 5:30, so we're going to let Mr. Stamp do his thing. So Mr. Stamp, you want to go ahead and start some of your county report?
Sure, Mr. Counsel. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Council President, members of the council. Under the county manager report tonight, I have several items for you. Under board and committee appointments, the first would be the animal control board requesting the reappointment of Mary Newcomb and Cassandra Van Hoosier to that board.
Motion to approve appointment?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Ms., Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Thank you. Counsel, we're requesting the promotion of Meredith Waters to a full member of the Board of Appeals, and the appointment of Elizabeth Conley as an alternate member of the Board of Appeals as well.
Motion to approve the appointment?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Ms. Stane.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
And then, thank you, counsel. And the next would be the Ethics Commission. We're requesting the reappointment of Dr. James Bell to serve on the Ethics Commission.
I move the appointment.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
And counsel, next is Parks and Recreation Advisory Board requesting the reappointment of Carisha Hoffman as a Board of Education representative to serve on that board.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
And the next will be the Tourism Board requesting the reappointment of Maureen Curry, representing the town of Easton on the board, as well as Mr. Eric Levinson from the Humming Bird Bed and Breakfast to serve on the Tourism Board.
Motion to approve the appointment?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Thank you. That completes your board and committee appointments for this week. And counsel, I'd like to ask Ray Clark, the county engineer, to come forward. Ray's here this evening to ask for your approval to award bid number 2509 Tillman on the Chesapeake Resilient Green Infrastructure Project. He'll give you the details, and I'll fill in where necessary. Ray?
Again, Ray Clark, county engineer, counsel. We received bids, actually five bids, on June 20th for the bid number 2509, which was the Tillman on the Chesapeake Resilient Green Infrastructure Project. This is a shoreline project, which is receiving $1.4 million worth of grant funding through DNR and the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. Just give credit to Brendan Charlton and Bryce Yelton. They were really the entities responsible for working with the citizens. We're just helping in the process of bidding this project out and overseeing the construction. Based upon the review that was completed by Land Engineering, that's also been hired as the construction manager for us, they ultimately have made a recommendation that we award the project to the lowest responsible bidder, which is Unity Landscape Design and Build for $988,060. We recommend that we also proceed with that recommendation to go ahead and award it to them. Again, this would be a conditional award until we've received DNR's approval of the bids, so that, you know, once, once we have DNR's approval, we would then work to contract with Unity Landscape Design Building Incorporated.
Mr. Clark, these are state and federal funds that are, that are doing this. It's a private entity, a private shoreline that's doing this. Is it that the county is the eligible recipient for those state and grant funds that can't go directly to the landowner, and so we have to be an intermediary for this process? I think I remember earlier stages of this, this process, when we were putting the big bid pack, bid package out, approving that.
That is absolutely correct, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
So counsel, that is the ask. I think we've covered it in fullness, and seek your consideration for approval.
I'll, I'll move approval of bid 2509 as recommended by staff.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Ray's still here. He has another request. He's requesting consideration to award contract to Easton Utilities for the relocation of utility poles on Goldsboro Neck Road as part of a road widening project. He'll give you the details. I'll fill in where necessary.
Again, this is Goldsboro Neck at the culvert down near Villa Road. We're widening that culvert. The game plan is really from Glebe up to the entrance of the Mistletoe Hall Industrial Park. Is to have 39 feet of pavement with ditching, open ditches. This is basically to have Eastern Utilities come in and relocate the poles on the south side, and then ultimately have those poles kind of run up to where I think it's the house that's just on the east of the culvert, tying in there. Again, this is, you know, we're basically having to widen the road, so we're getting, we're involved in Eastern Utilities right away, thus we're having to move their poles. Again, the amount that we're looking at is $50,555.22, and this would come out of the Goldsboro Neck project, which would be CP Street 8581. Again, we have the funding available to that. We've also awarded work to Verizon, and we're working very closely with David A. Bramble to get all, you know, the utilities relocated, and hopefully begin the process of potentially closing the road within the next two to three weeks. So we'll let you all know that in advance as well.
The only thing I'd add is this is an exciting project. As counsel knows, this is, this is another step in widening and making sure that the, the secondary means of ingress and egress for the Bay Hundred area that's used daily, which is Glebe Road to Goldsboro Neck Road to Airport Road to Route 50, will be widened and safer for, for traveling, the traveling public. That's the good news. The challenging news is there's going to have to be a bit of a detour for a while, and, you know, we'll make sure the public is aware of that well in advance.
I, I seem to recall that the detour involved with this project is a relatively short one compared to what we've had to do in, in other cases. It simply would detour through the Mistletoe Hall Drive.
It will, and I think the one advantage we have is that we have a property owner that, I guess, are just down Goldsboro Neck Road, just past the culvert on Glebe Road, or that intersection. So they'll be able to exit in and out without being too, or impacted by this project as much as they were the last time we did the work at that intersection. So there should be, it should be a little easier for a lot of the citizens there, yes, that are, they'll have to kind of detour around through the Mistletoe Hall Industrial Park.
And I, I seem to recall that on this project that, that we're doing, the stormwater ditch retrofits along the roadway. Can you talk about how the, how the utility pole relocation relates to that ditch retrofit?
What is happening with that is because of our ditches, we're having to move those, the poles outside of our ditch line. So the poles are getting moved out. We're probably going to be a little narrower where those poles are because of the boom truck's ability to reach. So we had to work with Eastern Utilities on that. You know, we were hoping to put them out further away, but because the boom truck would not be able to reach, we have to kind of keep them close to that, to the top end of that ditch. We were hoping to move them further away. So it, we are going to try and do some improvements elsewhere in that area, but probably where the utility poles are being located, it might be a narrow ditch kind of scenario.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other discussions or questions for Ray? Make a motion to move on.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Thank you, Ray. Counsel, that completes your county manager report for this evening. Thank you very much for your ongoing support. It was nice seeing Emily here with her team, with our 14 different department heads. They all work really hard every day, and it's exciting to see what they do. Thank you again for all your support.
Okay. All right. Clay, you could have talked for another seven minutes. You know what I mean? Good.
You can go to public comments if you want.
Yeah, we could. Okay, let's go to public comments.
Order proposed text amendment.
Uh-huh.
The proposed text amendment.
Concern of funeral home, we can do that one. Item number seven?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that.
Jumping all over today, aren't we?
We are. And you said long number, what's?
Seven, item number seven.
Okay, all right, let's do that one. Madam Secretary? Yep.
Counsel, discussion proposed text amendment to chapter 190 concerning funeral homes and crematorium.
Okay.
Yes, the county received a request from Brendan Mulaney, who's here tonight regarding a proposed zoning text amendment that would permit funeral homes and crematoria in the AC zoning district. It's already permitted by right and with by special exception in the BM, LC, GC, and LI zoning districts. So this would add it as a permitted use in the AC district as well, and establish some regulations around it as well. Brendan Mulaney is here to give you some more information.
Okay, welcome.
I thought I'd be at least two hours as far down on the list as I was.
No, no, you're right here. You're right here. So could you go ahead and explain kind of what we want to try to achieve?
Sure. Just for the record, Brendan Mulaney with McAllister, E. Tarsho, Walter and Walker, 100 North West Street. Thank you all for having us this evening. I'm here on behalf of Woodlawn Memorial Park LLC, which is requesting this text amendment be considered by the council, planning commission, and then the council again. What this request is, is I'm sure that everybody that's driven up Route 50 is familiar with the cemetery on the east side that's known generally as Woodlawn. This property owner is a eastern shore cemetery and funeral home operator, and they bought the property in 2018. The issue that they have is it's about a 45 and a half acre property. It is long established since the mid 1960s as a cemetery use, and has operated, to our knowledge, continuously since then. There's plenty of, of space on site to offer funeral home, sorry, funeral services. They recently, as I'm sure everybody is aware, constructed or are wrapping up construction on a new crematorium building, and that is deemed by the county as an accessory use today under the existing law to the onsite cemetery, which is why that is permitted. We went through that process, site plan process, and all of the approvals with all of the applicable state and county agencies, and that project has moved forward. The county staff was clear that the code as it's currently prescribed and drafted does not allow funeral homes as a designated use, which means that families and groups of people, and at some point, unfortunately, everybody needs the services that this property owner provides and are provided throughout the whole world, but groups of people that are, are meeting to bury loved ones and friends on the property don't have the ability to gather on the property for a funeral service. So anything, all the cars show up, they, you know, bury a loved one onsite, they have a ceremony outside currently on the property, and what this would allow is funeral home services to be, funeral services to be provided otherwise on the property to expand that offering. What happens right now is that these services are held off-site. This applicant has a building and a funeral home in the town of Easton, so you have these congregations elsewhere in the county. This proposal would allow services to all occur on the same property. So the gathering would occur on the property, traffic would not be consolidated in, you know, as much in downtown Easton or other towns where it might currently occur, and then travel, as we're all familiar with, in long caravans to the property. What we have proposed is a pretty limited, I know the council's often concerned about, are we going to have funeral homes pop up all over, all over the county, which, which certainly wouldn't be appropriate. So what we've proposed is a pretty limited and surgical text amendment, which applies, and would allow this use in the AC agricultural conservation zoning district only on properties that are at least 40 acres in size, that abut state highways, and in the, in Talbot County, that includes Route 50, 328, 331, and 662. And in, on properties that had a cemetery on it prior to January 1st of 2025. So with those limiting factors, you know, we're, we're pretty certain that this wouldn't open up the floodgates to allow new funeral homes throughout the county and the AC zoning district. The property owner has invested well over a million dollars in improving the property and making sure that it's a, a good service to the community, and their business can continue to operate. And, you know, this would be, I think, a reasonable text amendment that allows a reasonable use that takes some of the impact off of traffic, public infrastructure elsewhere in the county, and would allow consolidation of these services on larger properties throughout the county. Happy to answer any questions. We asked that the council recommend this forwarded on to the planning commission so that we can have the discussion with them and then come back to talk to you.
Okay.
So I have one question. So does the current property owner have an existing funeral home right now, or is this a new funeral home, or for other funeral homes to use this property, or have the funeral on site?
So this would allow the use, the gatherings themselves to occur on this property. This, this particular property owner, which is Helfenbein, Noonam, and Fellows, I believe is the name, they do have funeral homes, but not on the, on this site. So they have, they have one in, in Easton. They've got one in Queen Anne's County. They have one in Annapolis.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, counsel?
I'm curious how many, how many farms of 40 acres or more scattered around this county in the agricultural zones have old family burying grounds? And in the end, because of those that might exist along Route 33, Route 333, Route 579, all these other state highways, there's quite a lot of state highways, actually. Longwoods Road. How many opportunities we might be actually opening up? And you represent, this is narrowly written, but I, I, I wonder.
Understood. I'll, I'll look into that. My brief research said that there are about 58, based on online databases, known cemeteries in all of Talbot County, that the vast majority of those are likely small family plots. But I recognize the concern, and will confirm that this list of defined state highways is accurate, and if it isn't, that I come back to you with an exact list of those state highways, and identify which 40-acre tracks abut state highways, and would meet the criteria that have one of those 58, assuming, again, that that number's accurate, one of those 58 cemeteries on them.
Dover Road, Mathiestown Road, a lot, lot of state highways, yeah.
I think those are two of these numbers. Mathiestown, for instance, is 328.
Yeah.
And then one more question. So isn't the funeral home, this particular funeral home has purchased the old SunTrust building and is doing a funeral home expansion there?
No, ma'am. That's a, that's a different company. That's a, that's a different company.
Okay.
Not affiliated with this property owner.
Okay. Okay, council, any other questions?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, is there a, a motion to, to send this to the planning commission?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay, I got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Abstain.
Okay.
Understood. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. Yep. Gotcha, gotcha, okay. Okay, so now we'll go ahead and get organized here for a few minutes on the, um, public hearing.
Time's up, Chuck.
Time's up. Fire drill. Okay, madam secretary, you want to go ahead and, um, get started on resolution, um, three seventy-eight?
Resolution number three seventy-eight, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Order and Sewer Plan to reclassify, remap certain real property located on Kemp Road, Easton, Maryland, shown on Tax Map twenty-four as parcel forty-one from unprogrammed to S-one, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Bat Nine LLC.
Thank you, Council, Ray Clark, county engineer. On June twentieth, we met with the Public Works Advisory Board and they reviewed resolution three seventy-eight. Uh, they made a recommendation to table resolution three seventy-eight. They are seeking some additional information from the property owner. Uh, one of the questions, I think, is that they have actually sixteen acres, uh, that have been identified. In the sewer service area, the board had requested to, to really kind of specify where they would actually do the structure, the residential, residential structure. So that was the request of the board to get more information on that and also see how we would tie them into the sewer line. So I forwarded an email to the agent for the property owner and I've not heard back from them, but hopefully we'll, we will for the July meeting for the board.
Okay, all right. So, go ahead.
Good evening, council.
Yep.
Brendan Tarleton, uh, planning director for the record. Um, the planning commission reviewed this at their July second meeting, uh, and, and voted to table it as well for the additional information that was requested by the Public Works Advisory Board, uh, noting that they'd like to see, uh, those changes and an explanation provided, uh, for, for the future development potential for the po- for the property as a whole.
Okay. All right then. So, I'm assuming so that it's on, put on hold for the time being, we just have no access at this time? Or do we open it up to people coming up? We can open it up? Okay, so at this time, we'll go ahead and, and open it up on three seventy-eight, um, for anybody who would like to come on up and talk about three seventy-eight. Um, pl- please come on up. Okay. So we'll go ahead and, uh, leave that open. Okay. Madam Secretary, you want to go ahead and, uh, and, uh, the, the next resolution, three seventy-nine?
Resolution number three seventy-nine, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Order and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real property located at eight-two-nine-four Bosman Nevet Avenue, Saint Michael's, Maryland, shown on Tax Map thirty-one, grid ten, as parcel three thirty-three, lot one, from unprogrammed to S-one, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Barbara Portnoy Levine Inspector.
Again, council, thank you. Um, the Public Works Advisory Board at their June twentieth meeting, uh, reviewed the, uh, resolution, uh, three seventy-eight as well as the application. Um, they made a recommendation to the, uh, council to, uh, approve resolution, uh, three seventy, uh, nine via a four-to-zero vote. Again, this was an approved parcel. Uh, we also discussed that this is also one, uh, one of the lots as part of resolution two fifty that has been identified as a future area for providing sewer service. So that was included, yes.
Okay.
And on July second, the planning commission reviewed, uh, resolution three seventy-nine, uh, and a motion was made and passed via four-zero vote finding it consistent with the county comprehensive plan as well as the seven relevant standards in accordance with environmental article nine dash five oh six A-one.
Okay. Okay.
And, and because this property is less than five acres, it cannot be subdivided? It can only support, uh, under county zoning, the one dwelling unit that already exists there?
That's correct. We did do, uh, the, the deep research and the plat research on the property and confirm that there's no additional development rights available to this property. So the, the one that is currently utilized by the existing dwelling is the only one available to the property.
Thank you. Okay, any other? Any other discussion for council?
No, that's a question.
Yep, so I'll go ahead and open it, um, to the public. Um, anybody that wants to come up here and talk about three seventy-nine, please come on up. Yes, ma'am. I'll gi- I'll give you three minutes for individuals and if you're representing somebody, you can have five.
Okay, no, it's, it's my husband, I'm rep- my husband and myself.
Yes, ma'am, okay.
We own the property at eighteen-nine-four Bosman Nevet Road, thank you.
Yep.
And we would appreciate-
Could you, could you tell us who you are?
Sure, Barbara Portnoy Levine Inspector.
Okay, thank you.
And we would appreciate being included in the, in the sewer access.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, we, actually, our, our immediate neighbors were approved the last time that this was considered. Um, and we share a driveway with them. So hopefully that would make it easier for the access to be granted to our property.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And that's it, thank you.
Okay.
And you're currently se- a certified septic?
Yes.
Okay. Any, anybody else want to come up here and talk about resolution three seventy-nine? You're welcome to come up. Okay. So, um, three seventy-nine is eligible for vote, um, tonight. So, um, I'm going to go ahead and, and close the, uh, public hearing on three seventy-nine. So, uh, madam secretary? Can we call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay. All right, great. Next, resolution three eighty.
Resolution number three eighty, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Order and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real property located at seven-eight-seven-four Bosman Nevet Road, Bosman, Maryland, shown on Tax Map thirty-one as parcel twenty-one from unprogrammed to S-one, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Daniel Ball.
Again, Ray Clark, county engineer. The Public Works Advisory Board met on, uh, June twentieth. Again, they reviewed resolution three eighty along with the, uh, application. Uh, they made a motion and passed that motion four-to-zero recommending the county council adopt resolution three eighty.
Okay.
Counsel, thank you, Bryce Yelton, Talbot County Planning and Zoning. On July second, two thousand and twenty-five, the planning commission reviewed resolution three eighty. A motion was made by the planning commission to certify resolution three eighty that it was consistent with the two thousand and sixteen Talbot County Comprehensive Plan and the seven, seven relevant standards in accordance with environmental article nine-five oh six A-one of the Maryland Annotated Code. They voted four-to-zero to approve that motion. Uh, this is another relatively small lot. It's four point zero eight-three acres with no remaining development rights.
Okay, all right. Any questions or discussions with council? On here, okay. Okay, so, all right, so I'll open it up to the public, um, on resolution, um, three eighty. Anybody like to come up and, and discuss that? Come on up.
Good evening, hi.
Good evening.
Lauren Dionish from Atelier Eleven Architecture Firm, and we're representing Dan Ball as he wasn't able to be here tonight.
Mm-hmm.
And just because of the size of the property, the neighbors are already included and he has, uh, high water level, uh, and most likely a failing thirty-year-old septic system. He'd like to be included.
Okay, all right. Any questions or discussions?
No.
Okay. Okay, anybody else like to come up and, and, uh, discuss three eighty? Resolution three eighty. Okay. Hearing done, um, I'll go ahead and close that public hearing for three eighty. It's eligible for vote. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda is resolution three eighty-one.
Resolution three eighty-one, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Order and Sewer Plan to reclassify, remap certain real property located at seventy-nine-thirty Church Neck Road, Saint Michael's, Maryland, shown on map, Tax Map thirty-two, grid thirteen, as parcel one fifty-four, lot B, from unprogrammed to S-one, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by Jill and John Oldestead.
Again, Ray Clark, county engineer. Again, uh, the Public Works Advisory Board on June twentieth reviewed resolution three eighty-one. Uh, they did pass a motion via four-to-zero vote recommending the county council adopt resolution three eighty-one. I'll just note again, as we, uh, for all the resolutions that we're talking about today, uh, it is feasible to extend sewer to these properties.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, Bryce Yelton, Talbot County Planning and Zoning. On July second, the planning commission reviewed this resolution and a motion was made to find it consistent, uh, with the comprehensive plan and the seven relevant standards. That motion was passed four-to-zero.
Okay, that's great. All right, counsel, any other discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing on, uh, resolution three eighty-one. Anybody would like to come on up, please come up. All right, with that, I'll go ahead and close, um, resolution three eighty-one and it's eligible for vote. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote on that, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay. All right, next, madam secretary is three eighty-two.
Resolution number three eighty-two, a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Order and Sewer Plan to reclassify, remap certain real property located at six-one-six-three Long Point Road, Nevet, Maryland, shown on Tax Map thirty-nine as parcel sixty-six, lot seventeen, from unprogrammed to S-one, immediate priority status pursuant to an application filed by William and Karen King.
Okay.
Uh, Public Works Advisory Board on June twentieth did review, uh, resolution three eighty-two along with the application and ultimately, um, presented a motion of via, um, to basically recommend the county council adopt resolution three eighty-two and that motion passed four-zero. And again, this is also feasible to extend sewer to this parcel.
Counsel, thank you. On July second, the planning commission reviewed resolution three eighty-two. A motion was made and, and voted four-to-zero to approve the motion to find it consistent with the two thousand and sixteen comprehensive plan and the seven relevant standards.
Okay.
And, uh, Mr. Yelton, this, this one also is, uh, roughly seven point six acres, so no further development rights?
That is correct.
Okay. Any, any other discussion?
So it's, it's only one EDU and no further EDUs by amendment or anything else?
No.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, all right, at this time, I'll go ahead and, um, open the, um, public hearing for resolution three eighty-two. Anybody like to come up and talk about three eighty-two? Okay, I'll go ahead and, um, close the public hearing on three eighty-two and it's eligible for vote. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stepp?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay. All righty. Now we come to the good stuff now. How are you?
Good evening, council. Martha Sparks, Finance Director for Talbot County.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as you get ready to go through thirty-one public hearings on the next thirty-one bills that are related to capital improvement projects, I thought this would be a good time to, um, remind our citizens what these are and why we do this. And I'm going to read what I did bef- when we introduced them.
Sure.
Um, so on May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, council passed a bill, um, fifteen eighty-five to enact to establish the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six annual budget and appropriation ordinance. Per section six oh three to six oh seven of the Talbot County Charter, the budget consists of the current expense budget, the capital budget, and capital program, which includes an itemized list of the capital projects which an agency proposes to undertake in the ensuing fiscal year. While the budget and funding sources of these projects were approved in the Budget Ordinance Bill, number fifteen eighty-five, the county also creates capital-enabling legislation for each capital improvement project per six, section six twelve and each bill is subject to the referendum pres- provisions of section two seventeen of the charter and thus why we have a public hearing for each separate bill.
Okay, thank you.
You're going to ask the clerk to read all the titles?
I sure am.
All one-tongued?
Not as, yes.
Kill them and force you to each one.
Yes, yep. Okay.
Give her a pray.
Just for the capital-enabling legislation, not the ones that follow.
It seems to me it would be better if she read it and we voted.
Well, then, then we, this way we can have one public hearing for the-
Right.
Full bath.
Yes.
We'll still have to vote on them individually.
Yeah, I know that.
Bill number fifteen eighty-six, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen forty-nine, fourteen seventy-nine, and twelve forty-four for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the replacement and improvement of roofs of buildings and structures owned by Talbot County. Bill number fifteen eighty-seven, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen fifty-eight and thirteen ninety-one for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the replacement and improvement of HVAC systems at facilities owned by Talbot County. Bill number fifteen eighty-eight, a bill to authorize Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, improvements to buildings and properties owned by Talbot County. Bill number fifteen eighty-nine, a bill to authorize the replacement and improvement of the Talbot County-owned building and property located at one hundred South Hanson Street in Easton, Maryland. Bill number fifteen ninety, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen fifty-four and fourteen twenty-seven for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the construction of new recycling stations in Talbot County. Bill number fifteen ninety-one, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen fifty-nine, fifteen thirty-six, and eleven eighty-seven for the purpose of amending the appropriation for extension of water and sewer lines to the Talbot County Community Center and the proposed University of Maryland Shore Regional Medical Center Hospital Site located between Longwoods Road, Maryland, Route six sixty-two, and US Route fifty in Easton, Maryland. Bill number fifteen ninety-two, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen sixty, fifteen thirty-seven, fifteen oh nine, and fourteen eighty-four for the purpose of amending the appropriation for a capital project for the construction of emergency medical services stations. Bill number fifteen ninety-three, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen sixty-three, fifteen forty-two, and fifteen oh five for the purpose of amending the appropriation for replacement and improvement of nine-one-one Division Technologies and the nine-one-one Division Computer-Aided Dispatch CAD System. Bill number fifteen ninety-four, a bill to authorize the replacement and improvement of the greens at the Talbot County Hogmet Golf Course. Bill number fifteen ninety-five, a bill to authorize the replacement and improvement of the cart paths and paved areas at the Talbot County Hogmet Golf Course. Bill number fifteen ninety-six, a bill to amend bill number fifteen seventy-one for the purpose of amending the appropriation for replacement of dehumidifiers at the Talbot County Community Center. Bill number fifteen ninety-seven, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen fifty-six and fifteen thirty-three for the purpose of amending the appropriation for improvements to the Talbot County Detention Center. Bill number fifteen ninety-eight, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen fifty-five, fifteen thirty-two, and fifteen sixteen for the purpose of amending the appropriation for improvements to and expansion of the Saint Michael's branch of the Talbot County Free Library. Fifteen ninety-nine, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen fifty-seven, fifteen thirty-four, fourteen eighty-six, and fourteen twenty-four for the purpose of amending the appropriation to purchase improved or unimproved real property for future county purposes. Bill number sixteen hundred, a bill to amend bill numbers thirteen sixty-eight and thirteen forty-three for the purpose of amending the appropriation for security enhancements to county facilities. Bill number sixteen oh one, a bill to amend bill number fifteen forty- Bill number sixteen oh one, a bill to amend bill number fifteen forty-six for the purpose of amending the appropriation for a feasibility study for and possible future construction of a Talbot County Visitor Center. Bill number sixteen oh two, a bill to authorize the acquisition and/or construction of and improvements to county storage facilities. Bill number sixteen oh three, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen sixty-seven, fifteen forty-one, and fifteen oh six for the purpose of amending the appropriation for improvements to county roads. Bill number sixteen oh four, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen eighteen, twelve eighty-five, and ten eighty-two for the purpose of amending the appropriation for improvements to the Tunis Mills Bridge. Bill number sixteen oh five, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen oh seven, thirteen sixty-one, thirteen thirty-two, thirteen oh seven, and twelve sixty-seven for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the mapping, evaluation, and rehabilitation or replacement of county colors. Bill number fifteen oh six, a bill to amend bill number fifteen sixty-nine for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the construction of and improvements to the concession stand at the Talbot County Community Sports Complex. Bill number sixteen oh seven, a bill to authorize the replacements and improvements of county community pools and associated property. Bill number sixteen oh eight, a bill to authorize replacement and improvement of stadium lighting at Saint Michael's Middle and High School. Bill number sixteen oh nine, a bill to amend bill numbers thirteen sixty-four and thirteen forty-one for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the watershed improvement plan for the east and northeast areas of the Region Two, Saint Michael's Waste Water Treatment Plant Area. Bill number sixteen ten, a bill to amend bill number fourteen twenty-nine for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the watershed improvement plan for the west area of the Region Two, Saint Michael's Waste Water Treatment Plant Area. Bill number sixteen eleven, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen oh two and fourteen eighteen for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the connection of the Barnack and Fairbank Communities to the Region Five Tillman Waste Water Treatment Plant. Bill number sixteen twelve, a bill to amend bill number fourteen thirty-one for the purpose of amending the appropriation for improvements to the Region Five Tillman Waste Water Treatment Plant Pump Stations, Collection Systems, and Enhanced Nutrient Removal E N R Technology. Bill number sixteen thirteen, a bill to authorize the sewer system extension to the Marine Engineers Beneficial Association, MEVA, Engineering School off of Saint Michael's Road in Talbot County. Bill number sixteen fourteen, a bill to authorize replacements and improvements to pump stations and surrounding property in Region One of the Talbot County Sanitary District. Bill number sixteen fifteen, a bill to authorize replacements and improvements to pump stations and surrounding property in the Royal Oak, Newcombe, and Bellevue Areas in Region Two of the Talbot County Sanitary District. And Bill number sixteen sixteen, a bill to authorize replacements and improvements to pump stations and surrounding property in the Saint Michael's area in Region Two of the Talbot County Sanitary District.
Okay, great job. Okay, all right, so we'll go ahead, open this up to the pub.
Mr. Callahan, just one, one quick thing, I'd, I'd love to address a question for Ms. Sparks. That, we, we, I believe, if I remember correctly, we received correspondence after we introduced Bill fifteen eighty-eight. This is the one about introducing ADA improvements to, to buildings in Talbot County. And I believe Ms. Brown asked, asked us, or expressed caution about moving ahead with such a project until we had a plan to specifically do this. Could you talk about the process at which this puts us and simply enables us to do that? That, that this is, as we understand it, not final approval for such?
Sure, this doesn't include, this, this provides the funding for the project, but also, as part of that project, there would be, there would be a process where there, a plan would be created. So, there's no plan in place at this time. This just provides a level of funding for that specific project for that to move forward. Because you really can't move forward with the planning process if you don't have the funds available to spend on the planning.
Thank, thank you. I, I wanted, I wanted that explanation for, on the public record, and, and that explanation pertains to all of these capital-enabling items.
Correct, there's still, you still must go through, even though these are funds that have been approved in the budget by council, and these are projects, obviously, approved by council. When we go through that process, we have, we have to follow the county procurement process, and that, that really helps, is our major guardrails for any, moving forward with any of these projects.
So, I'm just, would confirm that our intent, staff's intent, is to continue a process of addressing handicap issues with some of the projects we've been working on, and some in consult, in consultation with Ms. Brown at the community center. We're, we've addressed issues there, the health department. This is gonna allow us to step back, take a, to analyze all of our properties, come up with a plan, and then move forward in executing a plan to make sure that we're in compliance as we should be.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah.
Turns, okay. Okay, so we'll go ahead now and open the public hearing on the range of bills from fifteen eighty-six until sixteen sixteen. So, if anybody would like to come on up here and talk about one of these bills, yes, sir, you wanna come up? And, and let us know which bill you're, you're, uh.
Sorry?
Make, make sure when you come up here, you tell me which bill you're up here for.
I tend to do that.
Nice.
Phil Rigan, two-nine-seven-three-six Sullivan Drive, Eastern. Specifically, the bill that I wanted to ask about, which is actually primarily a question. Bill number fifteen ninety-nine, it talks about purchasing improved or unimproved real property for future county purposes. Are they specifically designated properties that you folks already have in mind? Or is this an open-ended authorization to purchase properties as they might come available?
Mr. Stamp?
So, the, the, the bill authorizes the county to acquire future land, purchase it, it may become necessary as they deem, so it does not specify parcels of property at this time.
Okay, okay. Obviously, a lot of these issues, that was the only bill in particular, but I know the question. A lot of these items, I remember seeing in the budget as it was approved for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. And, and I'm assuming that these, these individual pieces of legislation, I don't know whether they're gonna be passed as individual pieces of legislation or a piece of blanket legislation because, but in any case, that's not my issue, it's yours. So, that there is money in the budget for twenty twenty-six to, to move forward on these respective initiatives?
That is correct.
Yeah.
So, the money was included in the budget, however, authorization to spend that money has to go through the process that we're going through here, the passage of the legislation for each of the projects.
Okay, learning a little bit more about your legislative process is very educational. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else would like to come up here and discuss any of the bills that we've brought up tonight so far? Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on these thirty-two bills. So, Madam Secretary, do you wanna go ahead and, we gotta approve each one of them?
Only if we choose to move to them to third reader, because these are bills that have not been moved to third reader.
Okay.
So, regular order would have these up at the next meeting. So, I guess the question for staff is, is there, is there a reason to move forward now on these? On?
I think we would, we don't see a need to move quicker than the process unless council wants to move them forward. Martha has, Martha might have something else for us.
Unless council has a reason to postpone it to the next meeting, we've generally, in the past, council has voted on these capital-enabling bills. Once that happens, there's still the process where that is open, and they are not effective until, I think, September sixth. So, there still is the ability for someone to bring the tension, just, just to go to referendum, which I don't know if that's ever happened, but unless there's a reason for the delay, the reason we introduced these bills earlier is to get them effective earlier because there are projects that are waiting for this funding. So, it would delay those by two weeks. So, that's the implication, which to some is not, but to some, they're waiting for it. They'd like it now, but they have to wait.
Hearing that, that, that impassioned and reasoned plea from Ms. Sparks, I will move bills fifteen eighty-six through sixteen sixty to third reader.
Okay.
Could you say those numbers again, please?
Fifteen eighty-six through sixteen sixteen.
Sixteen sixteen, yep.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion. Okay. We got, we got a motion.
We need to, we have a motion to second, we need to vote to move it to third reader.
Each one individually, right?
Well, well, we got a motion to second to move it to third reader. Madam Secretary?
Bill number fifteen eighty-seven?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
This is just the motion. Sorry.
It's okay, it's okay.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hake?
Aye.
Okay.
And now, she, she can individually read the title and we can vote down the list.
Exactly.
I have a question.
And if anybody's still awake at the end of this process, we can.
Given Mr. Rigan's question for the public, do you want to mention the fact of the county having a study done on county-owned property to determine best and highest use of properties? Because that would go with his question when he asked about properties.
Sure, so, so council member Hake is discussing the piece of legislation that authorizes council to obtain property when they deem necessary. The county, the county has put together a group to analyze, which is made up of staff and council representation to analyze our current space needs and to project into the future what additional space we might require for government services. And that will help inform the use of those funds as well as other factors.
Thank you.
Okay. Ready, Madam Secretary, go ahead.
Bill number fifteen eighty-six, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen forty-nine, fourteen seventy-nine, and twelve forty-four for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the replacement and improvement of roofs of buildings and structures owned by Talbot County.
Call for vote?
Yep.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hake?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen eighty-seven, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen fifty-eight and thirteen ninety-one for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the replacement and improvement of HVAC systems at facilities owned by Talbot County. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hake?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen eighty-eight, a bill to authorize Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, improvements to buildings and properties owned by Talbot County. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hake?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen eighty-nine, a bill to authorize the replacement and improvement of the Talbot County-owned building and property located at one hundred South Hanson Street in Eastern Maryland. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hake?
I have a question regarding this bill.
Okay.
So, where it talks about replacement and improvement, is, isn't the goal to just maintain it? Just maintenance regarding this particular property? I'm, I guess I'm just hung up on replacement and improvement. Are we talking about the structure itself?
So, so the original purpose of this bill was to give us, like, give council flexibility moving forward with the determination of the future use of the property. So, currently, it will be maintained until such time council decides what they would do with the building, whether it's to reuse it, repurpose it, to surplus the property, sell it. So, what this, what this bill does is put some money aside, and the capital improvement dollars are eligible for use for three years if not used. It could be extended. So, this hundred thousand dollars is to give council flexibility as it determines the future use of that facility. So, initially, it's to maintain the facility, which obviously, we wanna be good neighbors with the property and keep it, you know, keep it in good condition. We're currently using it for storage at this time, and, and, and a group will be working to look at whether there are future needs for the county services in the facility, or any recommendation to do anything different. I don't know if that helps or not, but that was our thinking in drafting.
So, it does, but the bill, in the bill, it doesn't mention anything about maintenance.
I'm sorry.
It says replacement and improvement, replacement and improvement. There's no mention of maintaining or maintenance of the building. So, is that an assumption, or does it have to be in the wording of the bill?
So, I think I can add something here of value for you. When we finance, does the initial draft of the legislation for all of these bills, when we meet with the department heads and the county manager and staff, you know, we, we find out what they, what they need to do and what they want to do. And we create that initial draft, and we found in reviewing some of the older legislation that had been written, everything was very narrow. And we tried to make sure that there was, it was, there was enough specificity in there, but not something that would box us in. We, we had a capital-enabling legislation that said there was a replacement of the roof on the courthouse. Well, then, when we wanted, when we had a savings from that, we needed to use that on the south wing of the courthouse, but the capital-enabling legislation was very narrow. So, we tried to build the flexibility in the wording of the bill.
So, so just, and I'll try to add a little bit of clarity. So, I think council, as the, as, as the group works with council to determine best use of property, spacing needs and what have you, and, and that, that building is analyzed. It, it's fair to say that we, we put money in a budget to either improve or?
Replace.
I'm sorry?
Or replace.
Right, exactly. So, I mean, in the next three years, the intent is to work with council to have a determination whether we're gonna improve that building for another use or to remove the building.
I guess my point is that maintenance isn't in there. But what I'm hearing is ma, maintenance is part of the equation.
But it does say.
Improve.
Including but not limited to, which sort of opens the door that there could be other things that are not specified, such as maintenance, that the funds could be used for, is that correct?
Well, I think, I think the bill is clear, and this is what we would adhere to, and, and the dollars could only be spent for improvement or the removal of the facility. And so, you know, if, if, if we're spending money on that building, it's either to improve it or to remove it under the, under the funds that are attached to this bill.
So, I'm just asking the question.
So, daily electric bills for maintaining.
Maintenance is a part of this, is my question.
No, maintenance is not a part of this. Maintenance is a part of the county buildings, the county buildings' operating budget. So, the county facilities budget includes maintenance on that building. So, it will still be maintained, we'll still be paying electric. I think the trash service was just removed, but, but that, that's including, that's part of the operating budget.
Okay, so not part of the capital.
Correct, got it.
That was my, that is what I was trying to get to. Thank you, Martha.
Correct. Got it. That was my, that is what I was trying to get to. Thank you, Martha.
Did you need, you still need to vote on that one, I believe?
Hmm?
Yeah, I think you still need to vote on that one? Or is it already voted?
Oh, was.
You're holding your vote.
Oh. Yes.
She voted, yes.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know, do you want to change it?
No.
Okay.
Bill number fifteen ninety, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen fifty-four and fourteen twenty-seven for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the construction of new recycling stations in Talbot County. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen ninety-one, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen fifty-nine, fifteen thirty-six, and eleven eighty-seven for the purpose of amending the appropriation for extension of water and sewer lines to the Talbot County Community Center.
I ask that so much be considered on reading. Without objection, we can, we can vote.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen ninety-two, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen sixty, fifteen thirty-seven, fifteen oh nine, and fourteen eighty-four for the purpose of amending the appropriation for a capital project for the construction of emergency medical services stations. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen ninety-three, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen sixty-one, fifteen forty-two, fifteen oh five for the purpose of amending the appropriation for replacement improvement of nine-one-one division technologies and the nine-one-one division computer aided dispatch CAD system. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen ninety-four, a bill to authorize the replacement improvement of the greens at the Talbot County Hog Net Golf Course. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen ninety-five, a bill to authorize the replacement and improvement of the car paths and paved areas at the Talbot County Hog Net Golf Course. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen ninety-six, a bill to amend bill number fifteen seventy-one for the purpose of amending the appropriation for replacement of dehumidifiers at Talbot County Community Center. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen ninety-seven, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen fifty-six and fifteen thirty-three for the purpose of amending the appropriation for improvements to the Talbot County Detention Center. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen ninety-eight, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen fifty-five, fifteen thirty-two, and fifteen sixteen for the purpose of amending the appropriation for improvements to an expansion of the Saint Michael's branch of the Talbot County Freed Library. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number fifteen ninety-nine, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen fifty-seven, fifteen thirty-four, fourteen eighty-six, and fourteen twenty-four for the purpose of amending the appropriation to purchase improved or unimproved real property for future county uses. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen hundred, a bill to amend bill numbers thirteen sixty-eight and thirteen forty-three for the purpose of amending the appropriation for security enhancements to county facilities. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen oh one, a bill to amend bill number fifteen forty-six for the purpose of amending the appropriation for a feasibility study for a possible future construction of a Talbot County Visitor Center. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen oh two, a bill to authorize the acquisition and or construction of and improvements to county storage facilities. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen oh three, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen sixty-seven, fifteen forty-one, and fifteen oh six for the purpose of amending the appropriation for improvements to county roads. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen oh four, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen eighteen, twelve eighty-five, and ten eighty-two for the purpose of amending the appropriation for improvements to the Tunis Mills Bridge. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Ha- Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen oh five, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen oh seven, thirteen sixty-one, thirteen thirty-two, thirteen oh seven, and twelve sixty-seven for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the mapping, evaluation, and rehabilitation or replacement of county culverts. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen oh six, a bill to amend bill number sixteen fifty-nine for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the construction of and improvements to the concession stand at the Talbot County Community Sports Complex. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen oh seven, a bill to authorize the replacements and improvements of county community pools and associated property. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen oh eight, a bill to authorize replacement and improvement of stadium lighting at Saint Michael's Middle and High School. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen oh nine, a bill to amend bill numbers thirteen sixty-four and thirteen forty-one for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the watershed improvement plan for the east and northeast areas of the region two Saint Michael's wastewater treatment plant area. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen ten, a bill to amend bill number fourteen twenty-nine for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the watershed improvement plan for the west area of the region two Saint Michael's wastewater treatment plant area. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen eleven, a bill to amend bill numbers fifteen oh two and fourteen eighteen for the purpose of amending the appropriation for the connection of the Barnet and Fairbank communities to the region five Tillman wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen twelve, a bill to amend bill number fourteen thirty-one for the purpose of amending the appropriation for improvements to the region five Tillman wastewater treatment plant, pump stations, collection systems, and enhanced nutrient removal, E N R, technology. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen thirteen, a bill to authorize the sewer system extension to the Marine Engineers Beneficial Association, M I B A, Engineering School off of Saint Michael's Road in Talbot County. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen fourteen, a bill to authorize replacements and improvements to pump stations and surrounding property in region one of the Talbot County Sanitary District. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen fifteen, a bill to authorize replacements and improvements to pump stations and surrounding property in the Royal Oak, Newcombe, and Bellevue areas in region two of the Talbot County Sanitary District. Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Bill number sixteen sixteen, a bill to authorize replacements and improvements to pump stations and surrounding property in the Saint Michael's area in region two of the Talbot County Sanitary District.
For those keeping track, this is the last of those.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
All right, good job. Okay. Open to rest. Good. Okay.
Good job, good job.
Good, good, good. All right, all right. Next on the agenda is bill sixteen seventeen.
Bill number sixteen seventeen, a bill to amend chapter one ninety zoning subdivision and land development of the Talbot County Code for the purposes of enacting regulations regarding dissolved air flotation, DAF residuals, food processing residuals, and liquid organic soil amendments, providing that the storage of such materials is a permitted use in the agricultural conservation, A C, countryside preservation, C P, western rural conservation, W R C, and rural conservation, R C, zoning districts, and defining terms associated therewith.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll go ahead and, um, we still have the public hearing going on, so, um, Brendan, you want to come up here and, 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 you know, Bryce just, just kind of, um, help, help the public understand what this is about?
Counsel, thank you. Bryce Yeldon, Talbot County Planning and Zoning. This is a tax amendment that was brought forth and introduced by the Planning Commission initially. The Planning Commission initiated this, uh, from hearing from some of our local agricultural users in the county as well as our farmers. And I believe that there was an issue a couple of years ago that went before the Ag Resolution Board related to DAF materials. And this is, uh, the subsequent follow-up, uh, hopefully, hoping to resolve any future issues that DAF residuals have in the county. DAF residuals, um, kind of a, a short version of it are wastewater materials. So they're, they're used in industrial waste. So think of things like agricultural processing, where you, where you have, uh, solids left over from processing of whatever, it could be chicken, it could be, you know, seafood, anything like that. Uh, those particulates go into a wastewater management treatment system called DAF. It then combines in a scientific way and essentially produces a sludge. So that sludge is then, uh, high in nutrients and it gets placed on farms than the county. Uh, some of our other local municipalities, uh, mainly Dorchester and, um, Caroline County have had moratoriums and other subsequent tax amendments, uh, locally. And so we just want to make sure that we're on top of this and make sure that we're not.
Great.
Unregulated in this process. The state has also taken up legislation in twenty twenty-four that relates to the restriction of those materials with the state chemist and the Department of Agriculture. But it does not relate to the land use, uh, section of that that's left up to the, to the local jurisdiction on where these are allowed and how they're allowed. And that's why we're here today. So, uh, open for any questions. I can clarify anything if you need to.
Any questions, counsel? Okay, appreciate it, guys.
Absolutely.
All right. I'll go ahead and open it, um, on the floor right now. Um, if you have any, um, questions about sixteen seventeen, please come on up here. Any concerns? Okay, hearing none. I'll go ahead and, um, um, keep it open and it's eligible for vote, um, on the twenty-second. Okay? All right. Madam Secretary, you want to go ahead and, um, move on to sixteen eighteen?
Bill number sixteen eighteen, a bill to amend chapter one ninety zoning subdivision and land development of the Talbot County Code for purposes of providing that cannabis growing and the processing of cannabis grown on site shall be permitted uses in the agricultural conservation, A C, countryside preservation, C P, and western rural conservation, W R C, zoning districts, providing that the processing of cannabis not grown on site shall be permitted by special exception in the A C, C P, and W R C zoning districts and providing that cannabis dispensaries shall be permitted by special exception in the limited commercial, L C, general commercial, G C, and limited industrial, L I, zoning districts, each subject to certain conditions and defining terms associated therewith.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Would you guys come on up one, one more time, please? Try to help the public understand, you know, find a solution for this situation.
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Just for the record again, Brendan Torrington with the Department of Planning and Zoning. Um, the draft zoning regulations regarding cannabis were, uh, originally initiated by you all. Um, you gave direction to the planning staff to, uh, draft cannabis legislation that addresses all facets of the operational standards of that, uh, based on the state's requirements and the legalization of that product to be grown, processed, and sold in the state of Maryland. Um, many of our neighboring jurisdictions have already enacted legislation. We took a look at a lot of what our neighboring jurisdictions did, uh, when drafting this legislation. Uh, forwarded a, uh, a draft copy of this legislation to the Planning Commission. Uh forwarded a uh a draft copy of this legislation to the Planning Commission. They reviewed it um from there, the uh the Planning Commission held a work session with you all to discuss those revisions and to get some further direction on where you all are remaining as far as additional bulk requirements and standards related to each of these individual uses. Uh from there, we've provided you with a copy of the finalized and recommended version from the Planning Commission of a draft cannabis legislation that addresses uh the growing, processing, and the dispensary aspect of that licensing process. And I believe that the bill clearly articulates what districts that's approved under and the additional bulk requirements that coincide with them. We went over this in the last meeting as well. Um so this is essentially in front of you uh to address a a new land use classification, so to speak, in the state of Maryland to ensure that we're compliant with the requirements of the state as well.
Okay, that's good, we appreciate it. Okay, at this time, I'll go ahead and um open it to the public, and anybody would like to come up here on sixteen eighteen, please come on up? Yes, ma'am, how are you?
Hi.
Good, good.
My name is Lori Yates. I'm a long-term resident of Easton in Talbot County. I think I've met some of you. And um I think you may already have a letter that was submitted to the council.
Yes, ma'am, we do.
So I wasn't going to read it word for word, but um just wanted to put a face to this um person who, me, who's received a cannabis license for cultivation from the the state M C A. And um let you know, as a long-term resident, I care a lot about our community and have been involved in numerous nonprofit organizational efforts um through my own employment and also peripherally the healthcare industry here. Um one of my positions was with Susan G. Coman, and I worked with a lot of the cancer care providers in the community who we provided grant funding to. And as a cancer survivor myself, was was part of the motivation for applying for this license. We'd like to see a um good a good program brought to Talbot County for cultivation of cannabis, done in a very carefully thought-out way that integrated into the community and as a reputable business here in Talbot County. So I just wanted to introduce myself and put a face to that initially, and um one of the things we've been pursuing over, it's really been a two-year period that we've been working with the M C A. There've been a lot of delays at the state level, decisions that have been made, there've been some um back-and-forth things that have occurred that have really delayed the process before it's come to the county level even. So we've tried to do what we could to kind of step forward and uh do some preliminary work around that, securing financing and for a project and also looking at real estate. So we've found a property that we feel is particularly beneficial for this project, and um we wanted to um it it's it's a plus thirty-acre property. Um you may be familiar with it. It used to be called Triple Creek Winery, south of Cordova Road. It meets a number of the requirements that are already in place regarding zoning. But one of the things that's uh we're very concerned about is the potential for this five-hundred-foot setback. If that was put into place, it really would um pull the rug out from us trying to work with the current owners and go ahead with the purchase of that property. Has not been purchased yet because we're waiting on these on the final um approval. But such a restriction would make it impossible for us to move forward with that property, and we've really put a lot of time and effort into it. It has a lot of things already that would make it um easier for us to step forward and and do an effective project and meet all the criteria that's required. So I'm just coming here before you to talk a little bit about that, and our suggestion um would be to revise that setback requirement if possible. We suggest a two-hundred-foot uh setback. Um we feel that that's still within um a a good plan to have it off of the public access road, and um really don't expect that that would present any any problems within that that part of our agricultural area.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, we're we're right out of time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Any final, any final thoughts?
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Hello. Thanks for having us.
Yep.
My name is Dave Ferraris, um owner of Lady Grace, also uh an award winner, not award winner, but a license winner from the state of Maryland M C A uh for processing. We've submitted a letter to you folks. Just want to reiterate what Lori just said, our concerns about the restrictions that are proposed would really make it detrimental to the last year and a half work that we've put in uh trying to research and find an appropriate property for our business.
Okay.
I've written down a few words I'm going to read, um just because it's sort of put my thoughts together. Cannabis cultivation is now one of the most tightly regulated industries in Maryland, as we know, with odor controls, security plans, state inspections, it's not the Wild West. It's agriculture with oversight. These operations bring local jobs, tax revenue, and long-term investment. And one of the things I think is the biggest benefit is without the traffic or noise of retail or manufacturing. I understand and respect the concerns of residents and you elected representatives here. It's an important decision for the community and it's important that we get it right. I feel strongly about that as well. I've been here for about eighteen years now. And I have two kids in the public school system. But with at least two of the proposed amendments in Bill sixteen eighteen, specifically the minimal setbacks and the no odors clauses, Talbot County will realistically and effectively be disqualified from participating in cannabis processing and growing endeavors. Some level of odor, I don't think should prohibit these businesses. Um with sealed buildings and carbon filtration systems, a level of smell can be mitigated, just as we've seen uh in town with the crab processing on South Aurora Street. I also want to speak to the character of some of the people involved. We're not outsiders looking to exploit our town. We're longtime residents, small business owners. I myself have worked in nonprofit for years, uh and we're neighbors who care deeply about the community. We volunteered on local boards, coached little league teams, supported food drives and school fundraisers. This isn't just about growing a plant, it's about growing growing an opportunity responsibly and transparently. Believe that bringing a well-run professional cannabis operation to Talbot County can enhance the community, not harm it. It creates well-paying jobs for local people, supports agricultural innovation, provides a regulated alternative to unlicensed underground activity. Just like wineries, breweries, other specialty farms that have added new dimensions to rural economies, a cannabis processor or grow operation with the right oversight and community partnership can do the same. And again, the people proposing this are not strangers. We're committed to doing this the right way with respect for the land, the law, and our neighbors. We're not asking for a blank check, we're just asking for a fair chance. I'd like us to work together to set conditions that protect neighbors while also allowing our farm to grow responsibly.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Appreciate it, appreciate it, thank you. Okay. And anybody else like to come up here and talk about sixteen eighteen? So so Brendan, could you come up here for a second, and Bryce? Just just for a second, so you know, um seems like the these applicants have um, you know, reached out, and I think you've talked to them a little bit, and is this something that maybe you can kind of work with them to to help them guide them a little bit um with some of their concerns on some legislation we we've done? Is there is there is there an avenue that we can do a text amendment of some sort to see if we can help them out?
Well, I think the the main concerns that I heard based on the testimony here were the um the the minimum setback requirement, which as it's written right now, we have a five-hundred-foot setback from any lot line of a property containing pre-existing residential uh uses unless consent is obtained from all owners of residential properties within five hundred feet to reduce that setback to two hundred feet. So there's the option built in for a further reduced setback, providing that the neighboring proprietors within that radius are consenting. But I think the understanding and the expressed concern here is a reduction to two hundred feet. And I I think we originally spoke about that um at the work session with the county council and the planning commission, and that several of our other agricultural type uses or classified uses within the county uh adhere to and require a two-hundred-foot setback. Agricultural processing is one of them. Uh commercial feedlots and lagoons for poultry and hog houses is another. So two hundred feet isn't a, you know, pie-in-the-sky idea
Sure.
setback. It's certainly one that we've utilized and come to realize is effective for other land uses as well.
Okay, okay.
So I mean, that's certainly something for the council to consider. But the way the language is written now, you can get down to that two hundred feet, it just requires an additional step uh of approval or consent from neighboring property owners.
I see. So the consent would be, we don't have to do anything, we just need consent from the the property.
Yes, you have to um essentially what you would do is, you know, create a radius around the property lines, see who falls within that five-hundred-foot setback, and if all of those neighbors are willing and consenting to that setback reduction, whatever they requested at, it can go no lower than two hundred feet.
I see.
Uh based on the way the code is currently written.
Okay.
And obviously, they're requesting to reduce it further to just two hundred feet across the board and not have the uh the proprietor consent portion of that.
Okay.
And then the others related to odor, I think the um the language that we included for odor was duplicated through the cannabis grower, processor, and the dispensaries. Uh the language directly mirrors what's in the Town of Easton's ordinance now for cannabis. The only difference in our regulations from theirs with respect to this language is that I believe the Town of Easton restricted the growing capabilities for cannabis to strictly indoor, which obviously this language is more applicable there. However, we have the cannabis growing operation as an indoor or an outdoor opportunity here, uh which you know, just thinking about it logically, that may present some issues as far as actual odor mitigation when you're talking about um open-air growing. So there's obviously the opportunity if the council would want to discuss possibly exempting outdoor facilities from the odor mitigation requirements, realizing that there's no real way to capture that odor within the business operation if it is in fact open-air grown, not under normal.
Okay.
Question question for Mr. Thomas up on procedure. If we if we were to introduce uh an amendment at the next meeting altering this language on minimum setbacks, possibly odors related to outdoor growing, uh those amendments would not necessarily go back to the Planning Commission, is that correct?
Uh that is correct, and and I think in this instance, if we're talking about a change in setbacks, I mean, the and the odor control, the Planning Commission's already reviewed this and made recommendations. This doesn't, you know, we're not throwing in something completely different that I think substantially alters the bill, so I think you could uh propose an amendment along those lines, and the bill expires on August fourteenth, so I think that leaves us two more meetings to to tackle this.
So so we could push it to the August twelfth meeting?
That that is correct. So we could theoretically introduce an amendment at the next meeting and then vote on it uh at the August meeting and proceed from there, and that might even give the Planning Commission a little bit of time to to take a look at it and offer some additional recommend recommendations, even though I know that they're required to under the zoning code.
Right, we we could we could on introducing an amendment refer to them for their opinion at their August meeting.
Yes, I think does that Brendan, does that leave you enough time?
If it's on the twenty-second, we can certainly hold a tentative space on the agenda for additional discussion related to cannabis legislation, so we'll just put that as a general discussion item. And then obviously, if the 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 choice of the council is to move forward with proposing that amendment, referring it to the Planning Commission, we'll just report back to you all at the following meeting in in August on their review and comments of any proposed changes.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
That'd be great, that'd be great. Okay, any other questions, counsel? Okay, okay, thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right. I guess we're down to uh public.
Public comments.
Yep.
Nobody has signed up in advance, so you can open the floor to those present.
Yes, anybody like to come up, public comment? Come on up, Phil. You did very patient back there, you know?
That's okay. I didn't I didn't sign up to come up here. I I thought I'd come here to public comments, because I wasn't sure if I was going to make it tonight or not.
Okay.
Phil Starky, Talbot County Volunteer Fire and Rescue Association. Uh just wanted to thank the council and and Clay. Um our our board switched in in this past month in June, so I'm no longer uh president of the association, Jimmy Easton from Cordova is. It's not a bad thing. I'm I'm back in as vice president. Um our our bylaws state that I can only stay in for two years at a time, so hopefully I'll be back in following year. But I just want to thank you guys um for all your help and uh and stuff that we got, you know, did in the past couple of years, and uh I'd like to highlight a couple of things if I've got a few minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
I know it's a long meeting, so.
Okay, yeah.
So there's a couple of things coming up this year, this year, next year. We've got three fire companies, um trap cell right in their hundred, so you guys might want to keep an eye out for their for theirs, and and Cordova and Oxford will be celebrating their hundredth anniversaries next year, along with the association will be celebrating their hundredth anniversary. So there's some things coming down the pike that you guys might want to keep an eye on. I know most of the times we're going to see you in praise and stuff at election times, but you know, the fire companies like to have you guys come out and and
That's right.
Couple of other things I want to talk about. It's been a busy busy year, um last last year, um things have been kind of rolling around. I want to thank you guys for the support over the years. We've been doing a lot of testing, we've added to the budget, um you know, hose testing, uh pump testing, ladder testing. So this year, um with the help of Clay and Martha, we were able to purchase a fit testing machine, which is a a device that fits on our air mask that tests the masks and makes sure that they're fitting properly, that the firefighters don't stand a chance of getting um any kind of smoke in their mask while they're So the the machine was pretty pretty expensive, so we had to, we we pulled some money together out of our budget that was, we knew we were going to have our reserves, so it was a good purchase. The D E S department is also going to utilize it because they have N ninety-five masks that they can use it on, and I've also um talked to Sheriff Gamble for his SWAT team. They, none of their guys have ever been tested on their gas mask, so they're going to use it to certify and make sure that all their members on the SWAT team were are being, you know,
That's great.
had the right mask and if they need to be ordered something different that fit them. This, we also uh I'll try to explain it real quick. There's a national registration for fire department for firefighters. It's called proboarding, and it's uh recognized in forty-eight states. So depending on the level of training that you have, you can register for this. We took it upon ourselves to pay for all the firefighters that were eligible in the county um out of the training money to register. We did it uh two months ago. We had twenty-six people showed up for the registration, one hundred and eleven certifications were implemented. There are different categories. The proboarding people said we were the largest county to sit down at one time to do this event. And they were really pleased. We had uh nine others that that came. Um there were some things that they couldn't do, so we had to have to come back. So we're going to make this an annual event for the departments, because it does cost the firefighters, if you go do it on your own, it costs them like fifteen bucks a certification, so. That was another good thing to happen. Uh R and R, uh we've had six people take advantage of the educational reimbursement program that we we put in in place. We've had um, we're working on new flyers. Um we've always done a single flyer for the county, so we decided to do seven different flyers, because every department has a different stuff, so we were doing seven different flyers. They're currently being printed, um so you'll see them out and about here shortly. The uh the low-set program that we got approved just passed budget, um we've got a lot of good feedback. We've had, we haven't sat down with Martha's department yet to to get it all implemented, but all the the feedback we've gotten for the members that are eligible and stuff were, we've gotten great feedback from the departments. We're also, we attended a two-day um event at the at the at the uh Hornet Arena. It was put on for the high school students, um myself and um Sonny Jones and another gentleman from Easton. We set up there. Great day. We had a, we had a ball with the with the high school students, putting them in gear. We had them running around the around the uh arena up there with air packs on and stuff, and uh I think Easton ended up getting like four four people that that joined. Cordova got two, I think, that ended up signing up, um juniors from the high school, so they'll be in the VOTEC program next year. So we're planning on doing that again next uh next year when they when they have it there. It looks, uh we're going to try to work with the the school board. We're going to try to get into the middle schools. We're finding out that seven acres is the better place to start hitting them other than, because they're already on a career path by the time they get to the high school.
Yeah.
So if we can try to get in there early, try to, you know, um get get them interested. A lot of our stations now have junior cadet programs, so that'd be a good time. They can usually join at twelve at junior cadet, so we'll get them in there.
You gotta get them, you gotta get them to ride the fire truck.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. So speaking of VOTEC, you know, uh the Easton's builder, they've got a training center coming up.
Right.
I met with the MIFRE um director up here at Eastern Shore. We're going to sit down, hopefully, when Easton's school, when Easton's training center comes on board, we're going to sit down with them. MIFRE's willing to train VOTEC kids at Easton's new training facility, which will make it great for the St. Michael's students. They'll do it in the afternoons. It'll be an afternoon program, so it'll be um, they have instructors that are willing to come to Easton. So we're going to look into that once the school, once the training grounds gets up and operational, and Easton's fire, Easton Fire Company's okay with that. They've already talked to MIFRE about doing some programs there anyhow, so. So we're going to, hopefully that'll that'll come about, um because we're getting some good response. They had nineteen kids last year in the VOTEC program, total of one of three counties. That's the largest largest group they've had, so there is interest. There there is there.
That's great.
And then uh other than that, I just want to thank you guys for supporting that north station and uh because well, you know, hopefully we'll do ribbon cutting in the spring and uh but other than that, thank you guys for your support, and um I just wanted to put, come up here. We don't get to see much of you, anybody anymore, so when we go to the banquets, but uh, yeah.
We definitely appreciate you and all the work you're doing, that's for sure. You're very, very important, and anything that we can do, um Sarah takes care of advertising and stuff with our celebrations and all that stuff, so maybe Mr. Stamp can help you along with that.
Right.
We can put that out there for everybody to try to help you guys out.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that that's a big thing, that training, uh what you were just saying, was MIFRE helping out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's that's big, that's pretty huge.
Yeah, I was I was I was surprised when I mentioned it to him, and I guess there's been some little bit of talks because of the the Easton training grounds, and uh they said they had some trainers that are willing to to come down and teach VOTEC kids, you know, we can get enough. It'd probably benefit Dorchester County too, being this close. The that's what the biggest thing is the drive time, back and forth to the training school is what kills kills the VOTEC for some of these kids.
Well, I'm sure that Mr. Stamp could help out during the evenings and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure we can get him out there.
Yeah, we can get him out there, yeah.
So that's all I got. I'll just thank you guys again.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay.
Thanks.
You you got update? Yeah, come on, yep.
Hello, Sarah Kilman, uh timer coordinator and communications manager for Talbot County. Um I have two I have two things. One, given that there is a thunderstorm outside, you may have received a Talbot County alert, and if you didn't, make sure you are signed up. That's the best way to learn about storms, that we can literally hear right outside right now. It is talbotalerts.com, and you will need to add your name, and then you can sign up to receive text, phone, or email, or all of the above messages about weather-related alerts, as well as other emergencies in the county. They do use it sparingly, but you do receive it if we have anything coming into our area such as a severe thunderstorm.
Okay.
That's the first update. Second update for Talbot 250, we just completed our second quarterly report, which will be given to council this week. For this council, we were excited to be supporting several projects and initiatives. We of course had Talbot Treasures a few weeks back, but one of these projects just launched last week, the first episode of Voices of Talbot aired on WHCP, which is ninety-one point seven. And new episodes will air each Friday during Val Cavallari's Shore Stories. Episodes can also be found online after airing at talbot250.org/voices. Talbot 250 will also be joining the celebration of our agricultural community this month. The commission will be out at the Talbot County Fair this Saturday, July twelfth, and encourage everyone to come out and stop by the table to get a special prize. We'd also like to give a shout out to the Tuckahoe Steam and Gas Show, which is occurring this weekend as well, and that is what a way to step back in time, if you've ever been, it is very cool to see. For all updates, events, projects, and stories, check out our website at talbot250.org, and you can sign up for our newsletter and follow us on Facebook and Instagram.
Sounds great. Any questions? Okay, all right.
I got one quick point.
Yeah.
I got my phone call, my text, and my email today, so, for everyone, for what Sarah just said, it works and it works well.
Yeah, council, I just want to double down on that and say, first, you know, we all want to keep, oh, so many families in prayer right now who lost so many people from flash flooding in Texas. But it's a reminder, it's a reminder that, you know, there are systems that are out there, day in and day out, the National Weather Service sends out watches and warnings, but if people don't have ability to receive them at nighttime when they're sleeping or whatever, then it's all for naught, right? But we have embraced technology here, and we have a tool here. Most of us go to sleep and our cell phones are on the table, right? So people, we really need people to sign up for those so that they can get those alerts in advance.
Very important.
So that was really good that Sarah brought that up, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. I guess, if I did?
Council comments?
Yeah, council comments, sorry. Okay. Mr. Stone?
I had the honor of participating on the front lawn of the courthouse in the reading of the powerful words of Talbot County's most famous native son Frederick Douglass, "What to the slave is the Fourth of July?" this past Saturday. I heard from a number of participants and others in attendance noting the power and relevance of those words today.
Okay, thank you. No? No?
I was trying to beat the rain.
Were you?
Are you? You can go. You can go.
No umbrella. So I guess the stuff is...
Raincoat. It's in the car.
All right, let's get Ray and go. So, Mr. Lusher, you want to?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-second, beginning at five o'clock PM. The council will be convening an open session at three-thirty PM and then adjourned into closed session, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. On Tuesday, July fifteenth, the county council will be meeting with the Board of Education at five o'clock PM at the Talbot County Free Library, Easton Branch. The meeting is open to the public, therefore, their motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene is noted.
Before, I'd like to make a motion, you said May, and that was our next meeting? I think it was just a typo?
Yeah.
Up front.
Tuesday, July twenty-second.
Yes.
There we go.
So Keisha made a motion, I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Steph?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay, have a great evening, thanks for coming.